This is High Point Mayor Jay Wagner. I'd like to welcome everybody to the December 7th, 2020 High Point City Council meeting. Before we begin, I will need to take a roll call of everyone, all the council members who are present, present in the council chamber. I am present in the council chamber, also present our council, Councilman Michael Holmes, Councilman Tyrone Johnson, Councilman Britt Moore, Mayor Pro Tim Chris Williams, Councilman Wesley Hudson, and Councilman Cyril Jefferson. Councilman Victor Jones, are you with us remotely? Councilwoman Monica Peters, are you with us remotely?
Yes, Mayor, I'm here.
Okay, I'm sure that Councilman Jones will be with us shortly, but we do have a quorum, so we're going to go ahead and proceed, and perhaps the communication staff can let us know when Councilman Jones is with us. One more chance, Councilman Jones, are you with us? Okay, I'm sure he'll be along. Before we begin the regular part of the meeting, I would just ask everyone to please rise for a moment of silent prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I do have one or few recognitions to make. This is typically the meeting where we recognize citizens that have served on various boards. And so I would like to go ahead and recognize several folks who have served a three-year term or more on either the Board of Adjustment, the Historic Preservation Commission, or the Planning and Zoning Commission. They're normally recognized in person and given a nice plaque for their service. I have one of those plaques from when I was on planning and zoning hanging on my wall. So, but this year, for obvious reasons, we can't have them here to recognize them. They are going to receive their plaques, but I wanted to make sure that we recognize them publicly. There are two folks who are retiring from the Historic Preservation Commission. One is Annette Cox. She has served three years from 2017 to 2020. And the other one is Julius Clark, who has served 15 years on the Historic Preservation Commission from 2005 to 2020, and served for, during that time, he served as vice chair for three years and chair for two years. And a lot of us know Julius Clark, and he's really been a long-term servant of the city in this capacity. So, thank you both to Annette and to Julius. On the Planning and Zoning Commission, Jim Armstrong served six years from 2014 to 2020, and Marie Stone served nine years from 2011 to 2020, and served as vice chair for a year. She also had served previously on the Board of Adjustment for eight years prior to her service on the Planning and Zoning Commission. I think I had a little bit of overlap time with Marie on the Planning and Zoning Board. So, Marie has been around for a while, and I believe she was a schoolteacher, maybe at Central or Ferndale or somewhere. There was some connection where I believe she was a schoolteacher at one point. So, we want to thank these citizens for their years of service to the city. They will be receiving a plaque commemorating their service on these boards. And I believe they, maybe they're listening out there. So, all four of you, I really want to thank you for your time, for your willingness to serve the citizens of the city of High Point, and for your dedication over these many years. So, thank you, thank you very much for that. Okay, next on the agenda is our strategic plan update. And I think the first update we're going to have is going to be from Councilman Holmes regarding the, I believe it is the marketing committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, public. I am pleased to chair the marketing branding task force for the city. And this is a brief update of our efforts to date. We have had presentations by our key stakeholders to illuminate any projects or campaigns that have currently been run by the members of the task force for High Point Chamber, Market Authority, CDB. And we've put those forward so that we can start to compare efforts that we are undertaking from those key stakeholders. In our last session, we established that the city of High Point, led by Jaron Hollis, would be the hub for all the information that comes in, and that going forward, we would also be benchmarking against some municipalities who have undertaken these efforts. To that effect, some action items that came out of the last session, we would be collecting data, assets for what each of the stakeholders had been doing on their projects. They would send that into Jaron to check it, to see what various stages of these campaigns that would be where they are in these campaigns. And when we come back to our next meeting in January, we won't meet for the Christmas holiday in December. When we come back to our next meeting in January, we'll compare all of these items, and then we'll start the formation of our comprehensive marketing and branding campaign for the city of High Point.
Thank you, Councilman Holmes. We also will receive an update, I believe, on our blight reduction. Lori, is this more?
I'll take that.
Oh, Chris is going to handle it.
I'll get it started.
Okay, you go ahead, Chris.
Sure. First off, we have the LCE staff recorded 14 zoning complaints. A total of 85 public nuisance cases were abated, 34 city abated, and 51 owner abated. Due to the pandemic, inspectors didn't work on a Saturday. We now have one housing case located at 337 Wingo with an ordinance passed for demolition waiting for repairs to be completed. We have six housing cases with demolition orders passed. A bid for demolitions are due on 12/8/2020, tomorrow. We have one house located at 1213 Leonard Avenue that had an ordinance for demolition that had been repaired, and are requesting recession of the ordinance. And let's see, this is an expected rental property, so that's good. During the report, reporting period, there have been 456 total cases, active cases, 253 active minimum housing cases, 73 active public nuisance cases, and 130 active zoning cases. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Lori.
I have a presentation.
Do you have a box for Chester and Charlotte?
Yeah.
Like that. You may know, Don, he's laying down.
Well, I think he wants a map.
He does want a map.
Yeah, I'm sure he does. Yeah, we're going to have to do a map, I'm sure.
Is it a whole lot of survey?
No, it sounds like, yeah.
Located as well.
Yeah.
It's not going to be everything.
I hope so. Those who are listening, you haven't lost your connection. We're just waiting on getting our software presentation up, and it looks like it's up.
Okay, all right. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Tonight, can y'all hear me okay, or do I need to take this off? Take it off, okay. The tonight's update is, just as Chris stated earlier, is the property at 1213 Leonard Avenue. We had just a quick rundown of when it, we originally inspected it in September of 2016, held a hearing, issued an order, tried to work with the owner to get things done, and ordinance was passed by council on September of 2019. And let's see if this is kind of, this is kind of blocked. But then after the council meeting, the owner and a partner came and asked the city for additional time. So, we met, reviewed their timeline, and they, it took them a while, they're a little bit past due in getting it done, but they were making pretty decent progress. And this is what the property looked like. I would love to say the outside looks a whole lot different. It looks slightly different. Most of the work was done on the inside. But this is what the property looked like on the outside.
What was the address on this again?
1213 Leonard Avenue.
Okay.
So, they did do a little bit of work on the outside. But as you can tell, the inside looked much worse than the outside, actually. Then after it was repaired, it's just repaired around the middle of this month. They are leaving some of the boards up. That's why you do see some boards up still, just to try and protect the glass from anybody breaking it, throwing rocks or doing anything like that. So, you see where they cleared some items away from the house, some of the brush, and the back porch is still, the doors boarded. But this is what the inside of it looks like. Much improved over the way it looked before.
All righty, man. How's Scott do today? Who'd you put him with? Here's a damn one, man.
Thank you.
Lori? Yeah. Back up to you, man.
All right, that's all we got. Next on the agenda is the public comment period. I have been informed that we did not receive any public comments, and did we receive any since the time this was printed here? Okay, so council did not receive any public comments for the public comment. Did receive a couple that were part of the zoning cases later on, but nothing pursuant to public comment.
So, you're a brancher.
We, next on the agenda is the finance committee items. And for that, I will turn the meeting over to Councilmember Britt Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Wagner. The finance committee had a regular meeting, and council, the very first item tonight is 2020-473. I'm going to remove that. We will, it concerns our annual financial report, which was discussed in our manager briefing, and I will come back to that. So, I'm going to take 2020-473 off the consent agenda, which will leave us the remaining balance of the items that we discussed, which dealt mainly with communications and IT-type stuff, and then some land contracts and recensions. I'm sure each of you had that in your packet, so I will present the remaining balance of the consent agenda with favorable approval.
Okay, there's a motion to approve the consent agenda items. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Wesley Hudson. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda items? Okay, hearing none, then I will now call the roll for the vote. Councilman Holmes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson?
Aye.
And mayor votes aye, so the consent agenda items are approved by a vote of nine to zero.
Okay, back to item 2020-473. It is our CAFER report 2019-2020, and Bobby Fitzjohn is going to step up and take it from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you're all aware, the city is required to undergo an annual financial audit. The process, for those of you that may not be familiar, starts in July, and we start closing our books. We're under audit for essentially four months as we create our annual financial statements, and then those statements themselves are reviewed as well. So, it's a four-month-long process. Very happy with the results this year, and very happy with the work of the finance department. I'd like to especially thank our assistant director and our accounting manager, Heather Forrest and Jamie Jones. They went above and beyond this year. As you all can imagine, things were made a little more difficult with working remotely, and, you know, just very proud of the entire group getting everything done. Those of you who have been around for a few years may remember Eddie Burke from Cherry Beckett, who typically gives the presentation. He is either retired or in the process of retiring, so we were handed off to a new director at Cherry Beckett this year, Mr. Dan Gogarty, and I'm hoping he's on the line.
Yes, I'm here, Bobby.
All right, great. Dan, you can share the presentation from your side, I believe.
Okay.
And then, Mr. Chairman, at the end of this, if you would acknowledge, if the council would acknowledge the receipt of the report, that would be great. Thank you.
All right, well, can someone just acknowledge that you see my screen?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you, thank you. Well, thank you for that introduction, Bobby. Really appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak to you here tonight. I wish to be there in person and be able to speak to you in person, but on the current situation, we're working with the best we can. And as Bobby had alluded to, this year has been like no other, and when it comes to an audit, an audit is no exception to that. And so, what we've done this year is we worked 100% remotely, and Bobby and his team really worked hard to get us everything we needed virtually. And I really credit his team and our team as well, who I have on the line as well, Alex Harris, who is the manager on this job this year. So, I'm just going to go over our role as external auditor, remind you what our role is throughout the audit process, any key highlights from the audit, things we look at in terms of internal controls and what we would call significant audit areas, and then summarize the overall results. So, starting off with the role of the external auditor, we perform our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. This is in order to provide a reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement and fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. In addition to those generally accepted auditing standards, we also audit the statements in accordance with government auditing standards. It's management's responsibility to prepare and present the financial statements in accordance with GAAP, and we perform our audit on those financial statements to ultimately express an opinion on the financial statements and our single audit procedures. At the conclusion of our audit, there are certain items that are required to be communicated to those in charge of governance. We do this in two ways. We do this by issuance of a letter, and then we also follow up with that letter in this presentation to deliver some of the significant findings from that letter. Getting into the key highlights here, we issue four opinions for the city. There's an opinion given on the financial statements themselves, on Yellow Book Report, also known as internal control over financial reporting, and then two opinions, one on federal and another on state single audit. We have issued an unmodified opinion in the current year financials, which is also known as a clean opinion. This is the highest level opinion we can give under our auditing standards. And we've also issued a clean, unmodified opinion on the Yellow Book and the federal and state single audit reports. In terms of internal controls, we had one finding that we consider to be a significant deficiency. That finding related to having a formal, not having a formal contract with one external party from the city. We've had no findings that we consider to be, though, a material weakness in the city's internal controls, which would be one level higher than a significant deficiency. In terms of our single audit procedures, we tested three federal programs this year. We tested the Home Investment Partnerships Program, the Community Development Block Grant, also known as CDBG, and we also tested the FEMA assistance that the city had received approval for in the fiscal year for Hurricane Florence. For the state single audit, we tested Powellville for the street repair and maintenance. And in all instances of the three federal and the one state, we found no findings with internal controls or compliance or compliance-related findings based on our single audits. In terms of those required communications I spoke about just briefly earlier, we had no significant policy changes, which is quite the change after the last few years, where we had a number of accounting pronouncements that had been issued and adopted by the city for the last few years. And with the issuance of the new GASB this year, most of the standards had been delayed one year from when they were required to be implemented due to the current pandemic. We are also required to communicate to you estimates that we consider to be significant to the financial statements. These estimates are used by management to develop certain amounts that are presented on the financial statements, and we need to, we always make you aware of any of these estimates that we consider to be significant. These estimates included unbilled revenue. This relates mostly to your water, sewer, electricity charges that would be after year end but relate to the previous year end. We also test your allowance, depreciation, fair value of your investments, your landfill closure and post-closure liability, and then your OPEB, elders, local government employee retirement system, and law enforcement officer separation allowance, those three being the pension and OPEB plans that the city currently has. In terms of adjusting entries, we had no adjusting journal entries or pass entries. What this means is that the financial statements that were provided to us by management, with the trial balance and all and general ledger detail, nothing had changed that was, that came from anything we tested that, so you're sure to know that the information that management is reporting to you on is the information that we are attesting to and with no adjustments. In terms of internal controls, looking at internal controls at the city is one of the most important things that we do as part of our audit. It gives us a good understanding of how transactions work and how the transactions ultimately get recorded and presented in the financial statements. We identify significant transaction cycles as part of our audit every year, as part of our risk assessment procedures, and those, that significant transaction cycles have included cash receipts, cash disbursements, payroll, and the financial reporting and close process for the city. We obtain key controls through, throughout those processes, and we walk through those key controls and test them as part of our audit. We test internal controls also as part of our single audit, and those include controls over compliance to ensure that not only is compliance being adhered to, but that there's controls to ensure compliance is being followed. In terms of our journal entries, we obtain what we would call a data dump of information from the city. This includes all entries that the city posts throughout the year, whether they are automatic in nature or manual. We then process that through independent software that we utilize that uses artificial intelligence to identify 25 different risk factors and identify those manual entries that meet the criteria of our risk factors. Based on that picked sample population, we will then test to make sure that the journal entries were made for a true business purpose and that they were properly approved. And I'm happy to say, in terms of our journal entries, we found no issues with any journal entries from a manual standpoint that needed to be addressed. In terms of our information technology and controls, we're getting an understanding of your IT general computer controls as it relates to systems that are in place that relate to your financial statements. This is a high-level review and does not include targeted testing such as penetration testing. This is also part where we just emphasize the importance of good controls, especially surrounding employee training, to help mitigate the risk of being a victim to a phishing scam. As part of our audit, we are not opining on the IT controls, but we're just ensuring that they are in place and meet industry standards. For our significant audit areas, you'll see here, a lot of the significant audit areas mirror those significant transaction cycles I mentioned earlier. We test receivables, revenue, payables, expenditures, payroll, long-term debt and cash and investments as part of our audit, and we do that in three different ways. We do that through confirmations, through data analytics, and then tests of details. Confirmations is normally being held for your federal and state grant revenues that we will confirm as part of the audit. Analytics, we're doing as based on your payables, and then also predictive test over your payroll. And then test of details is normally held for your cash and investments, looking at outstanding check testing, deposits in transit, and testing subsequent disbursements and subsequent receipts in the receivable section. So, in summary, I want to just mention that we have unmodified opinion in all four areas that we provide opinions on. We had no adjusting journal entries or past adjusting journal entries that management had passed on. Good internal controls overall, financial reporting and compliance. Did have that one significant deficiency related to the contract in place, but that did only relate to one vendor, and there was no single audit findings as part of our procedures. Again, also full cooperation from management. I do want to wrap this up by thanking Bobby, Heather, Jamie, and Ashley, and all those of the city that helped us to get this CAFER issued. As I said earlier, we did this 100% remotely, where in the past, we may have done it about 60%, so it wasn't, it wasn't a big ask to get to the 100%, but they, but we really worked as a team on both sides to really get this done by the 1031 deadline that we were meeting, which is, which is ahead of the extended grace period the LGC has given units of government, which was January 31st. So, with that, I will leave it open if anyone has any questions.
Any questions for Daniel or Bobby at this point? Okay, well, I would just like to take a quick second to echo Bobby and Daniel's thoughts on this process. This is obviously a very large and complex process that the city goes through every year. There's lots of boxes to check. I'm pleased, on behalf of the staff and the city, that we've gotten the good report that we have. And at this time, I will acknowledge that we have received the CAFER report for 2019-2020.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you.
Is that something we need to vote to accept or leave?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you for the reminder. And I will make the motion that we accept the CAFER 2019-2020.
Hey, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Cyril Jefferson. Any comments? Okay, I'll then call the roll. Councilman Holmes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. That item passes by voter nine to zero. That's all for finance, man. Okay, I would just like to say, anyone to the public, if you would like to read the annual financial report for the city, you can find it on the Financial Services section of the city's website. Next on the agenda are the, there are no prosperity and livability items, so we'll next go to the Community Development Committee portion of the agenda, and for that, I'll turn the meeting over to Mayor Pro Tim Chris Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. We don't have two items on tonight, so this, item, the first one is item 2020-45, 1213 Leonard Avenue. Council requests to rescind the order of adoption, almost at 2016, to the miles to dwell for that, I know. of item 2016 to the miles to dwell for that, I know.
Okay, good evening again, Mayor, City Council. So I'm sorry, can, where are we at? We're rescinding 1213 Leonard? Is that, we're, okay. So that's the case I showed you earlier where they'd, we hadn't demolition ordinance and then they repaired it. So we just need to cancel that ordinance now since the house has been repaired.
Laurie, are the owners going to inhabit that? Are they going to rent that property or they sell it?
I'm assuming they're going to rent it. I checked today, they're still delinquent in property taxes. So I'm assuming it's going to be rental.
I'll make the motion. That's item 2020-486.
There's a motion to approve the rescission of the ordinance. Is there a second?
Second. It's the wrong, it's 485, sorry.
Motion to approve item 2020-485.
No, please, seconded by Councilman Holmes, you renew your second?
Yes.
Okay. There's a motion and a second for approval of this item. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Councilman Holmes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Mayor for Tim Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. Item is approved by voter nine to zero.
All right, next up is item 2020-486, ordinance demolition of dwelling 10, 210 Underhill. I'll turn it over to Laurie once again.
This property, the inspector originally observed and made an inspection on July 24th of 2017. We held a hearing that no one appeared for on December 5th of 2019. We issued, it was determined that it exceeded 65% of the value. So in order to repair, demolished, was issued on January 16th of 2020 with a compliance date of February 21st, 2020. And the property's not been repaired yet. And they are delinquent in property taxes for one year for 2019 with a total due of $834.39. And I've not heard from anyone representing the property.
All right, thank you, Laurie. Is there any questions for staff on this item? All right, and for the record, Madam Clerk, have we received any public comment for or against this item?
We have not.
All right, thank you. In that case, I'll make the motion to approve item 2020-486, ordinance demolition of dwelling 210 Underhill Street.
Okay, there's a motion for approval of the ordinance. Is there a second? Believe that was Councilman Johnson. Is there any discussion on, on approval of the ordinance? Okay, hearing done. Councilman Holmes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Mayor for Tim Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson?
Aye.
The mayor votes aye. So that item is approved by voter nine to zero.
That's all I have, man. Yeah, we're good on the other.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, there were a couple of items impending, but there's nothing coming out of pending, okay?
Yeah, we're going to leave them there. I was told that we didn't have to make a motion to keep them there.
Perfect. Okay, next on the agendas are the planning and development items. I'll be handling those. The first item is item 2020-487, initiation of zoning map amendments. And I believe Herb Shannon will be handling that. So as soon as Mr. Shannon is ready, he has the floor.
Herb Shannon, senior planner with the City High Point Planning and Development Department. And I'll be providing a brief presentation regarding a request to initiate rezonings regarding the conference of zoning map amendment project. This is a request by the planning and development department for council to initiate zoning map amendments for a group of properties that are part of this project. And the conference of zoning map amendment project is a multi-year undertaking that began in 2017 following adoption of the new development ordinance. And the purpose is to review and evaluate zoning of land throughout the city, identify areas where zoning is out of sync with existing land use or inconsistent with current land use policy, and to propose appropriate changes. Just a little history, since 2017, we, council has enacted three rounds. We'll be bringing you the last group of properties for round three in January. Thus, we're bringing you a group of properties for initiation with round four. As of today, council, you have rezoned over 2,300 parcels as part of this project, totaling over 1,000 acres, about 2.7% of the city. And this project has already produced positive results as there have been a couple of parcels that have redeveloped. And because you've gone through that zoning process, old obsolete conditions from the 1980s have been removed. So those property owners did not have to go through a rezoning process as they redeveloped those properties. This will be the fourth round of amendments, and it's going to focus on eight areas of the city. Map that's included in your packet. These are mainly focusing in the northeastern, southeastern portion of the city and the eastern portion of the core city area. Most of these lands had their zoning approved in 1980s and 1990s. Or the current zoning is inconsistent with current policies. If initiated, staff will begin communicating with property owners in early 2021. Our process is we will send an early notice to the property owners. We're going to take these areas and sections. We'll send an early notice to those affected property owners, allow four to six weeks for questions and comments. We've been having telephone conference meetings or Zoom meetings with HOA representatives so they fully understand if they request it. And once those questions are addressed or there are no major issues, we'll bring forward in groups, like as you've been seeing, the various amendments. And staffers recommending council initiate this fourth round of properties for consideration for rezoning. If during a review process, the issue comes up or we determine that there is a condition or a conditional use permit or conditional zoning ordinance where there's still valid conditions, you're not obligated to rezone that property. You can remove that if there are any concerns. And that's part of, we go through the early notice process to make sure the property owners are fully understand what's going on and make sure there are no concerns. So staffers recommending your initiation of this fourth round of the conference of zoning map amendment project.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Shannon? Hearing none, then I will go ahead and make the motion to approve the initiation of the zoning map amendments, which is outlined in item 2020-487. Is there a second? I believe that was Mr. Jefferson. Okay. Is there any discussion or final questions? Hearing none. Councilman Holmes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Mayor for Tim Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. That item is approved by voter nine to zero. Next on the agenda is a resolution regarding the naming of 119 Underhill Street.
Mr. Mayor and council members, this is a request that came from the Community Development Committee, and it is to officially name 119 Underhill Street as the W. Blair-John Coltrane House, or as it will be more commonly referred to, the Blair Coltrane House. Later on the agenda, there's a historic designation. The reason this one's first is because that one actually goes ahead and refers to it as the Blair Coltrane House. So the appropriate order would be for this one to come first. There, there is no immediate impact as to that designation. There will be a future, some future signage that would reflect that name as it's already being called in the community. So we would request your consideration of the naming resolution.
Just to make sure I've got this right, do you want us to choose between?
No, the resolution uses the full name, but that will likely be shortened to Blair Coltrane on most signage that's utilized.
Gotcha, okay. All right, anyone have any questions for Mr. Ferguson? Okay. Hearing none, then I'll make the motion for approval of the resolution regarding the naming of 119 Underhill Street, item 2020-488. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I believe it's 118.
My cheat sheet says 118. It's on the agenda of 118. Do we know for sure?
It is 118.
Okay, then I'll redo my motion to say 118.
Thank you.
Councilman Johnson, you still have the second on that? Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have a question, but I'm glad that we're getting to do this naming resolution. As most historians tell me, the significance of, of ensuring that the story of the home is told includes adding those other names that have a lot of prominence around the property. And so Reverend Blair is John Coltrane's grandfather. He was someone who was a leader in the community, who instilled a lot into John Coltrane and made John the man that he became, a legend and notable around the world. And also, quite frankly, Reverend Blair is the one who built the house. So to tell that story of the house well, we thought it important to add that. And so I'm glad that we get to do that here.
Yes. Very significant in the history of our city. Anyone else like to speak on this motion? Okay, hearing none. Councilman Holmes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Mayor for Tim Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. That item is approved by voter nine to zero. We now have several public hearing items on the agenda. I think there are four to be exact. The, we will be holding the public hearings on these four items, these next four items tonight, but we will not be voting on them until Wednesday, December 9th at 5:30. That is due to the current ordinances covering public hearings during the COVID emergency. If you have, if anyone listening has any comments, you will have 24 hours to submit your comments to the council following this meeting. And we'll take those into account when we possibly take action on Wednesday. The first item is the ordinance regarding the Guilford County landmark designation for the Blair Coltrane House. For that, I believe Chris Andrews is...
Dave Fensel with the Planning and Development Department.
I was going to say you did it like, like Chris Andrews to me.
That's all right. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Do have the pleasure to bring you a request to designate the recently named Blair Coltrane House a Guilford County landmark property. And this request was at the initiation of the Coltrane House Scaring Committee chaired by council member Cyril Jefferson. And it has, was submitted by the city to the County Historic Preservation Commission, who unanimously recommended approval of this. It's also been reviewed by the city's Historic Preservation Commission, who unanimously recommended approval as well. And staff is also recommending approval of the request. This is the city's first landmark request since 2009, when the Radio Building was designated. There currently are a total of 109 properties in Guilford County that are designated county landmarks. And this, I think, would be the city's 19th or 20th property, 20th property that's designated landmark. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions on this item? Okay, again, we will be taking action on this Wednesday, December 9th at 5:30. Next on the agenda is the zoning map amendment 20-22, Windsor Investments LLC. For that, we'll be hearing from Mr. Herb Shannon again.
Herb Shannon, senior planner with the City of High Point Planning and Development Department, and I'll be providing you... Sorry about that. Once again, Herb Shannon, senior planner with the City of High Point Planning and Development Department. And I'll be providing you with a brief summary on zoning map amendment 20-22. Be the applicant is available, and he will provide a presentation and also address any questions you may have. This is a request to rezone approximately 44.6 acres located in the western part of the city's planning area. This property is currently within the High Point corporate limits. It's located along the south side of West Lexington Avenue, approximately 880 feet of High Point Walburg Road. The applicant's request to rezone this site from its current residential single-family three district to a conditional zoning residential single-family five district. And this is the site that's highlighted in green in question. If you had the opportunity to drive along this portion of West Lexington Avenue, it's right next to the water tower that is out there. And just for the members of the public, those areas that are highlighted in white are lands that are already within the High Point city limits. Those areas in gray are still unincorporated in Davidson County. This site's impacted by multiple physical constraints. There are three streams, some steep terrain, and a Duke Power transmission line that runs through the site. Because of these constraints, the applicant's request for rezoning from its current R3 district to the conditional zoning R5 district allows some flexibility in the manner the site may develop. This is a topographic map of the site. If you're unfamiliar with reading such maps, when the lines are further apart, the land is fairly level. Where the lines are close together, it notes that the terrain is steep. In this situation, there is a string that runs along the southern boundary of the site, also through the middle of the site. And you can see the steep topography that the applicant will be dealing with as they develop this property. This is an aerial photo of the site. And you also see where you have this track, clear path. That is where the Duke Power overhead transmission line bisects the site. Because of these various constraints, the applicant's requesting rezoning to the conditional zoning R5 district allows some flexibility in the manner in which the site may develop. The current R3 district and the R5 district are similar, but there are two differences. One being density, the R3 district allows densities up to three units per acre, while the R5 allows densities up to five units per acre. And the second allowable uses of our single-family detached dwellings are permitted in both districts. The R5 district does allow twin homes, but it requires, if you do a twin home development, that you have at least a five-acre tract of land. As far as previous zoning history in this general area, this is a blow-up in this area. And to the west, you see various single-family subdivisions. The original downs is to the west at Zone R3 from 1985. Swan's Gate Development from 1993. And the Swan's Lane Development, all of those are conditional use R3 or conditional zoning R3. You also have the Penfield Development, which is a planned development, and that is a twin home development. It's a combination of twin homes, multi-twin homes, but there are a few single-family dwellings in that development. I would note for informational purposes, the Transportation Department provided comments far as if a traffic impact analysis was acquired. None was required. The applicant's proposing a 102-lot, single-family subdivision. For a residential development, a traffic impact analysis is only required if over 150 trips are going to be produced during the peak hours. Based upon analysis by our Transportation Department, they note that this project would generate about 65 trips during the peak hours. So a TIA was not required. And also for information purposes, there's information from Davidson County Schools. As a courtesy, we always inform the local... As a courtesy, we always inform the local school district of any rezonings regarding residential developments and give them the opportunity to provide comments. And the comments from Davidson County Schools are noted on page three of your report. There are no significant increases or impacts to the area's schools. Key points to note from the analysis, far as compatibility with surrounding area. This portion of the city has a land use map designation of low-density residential, which permits development of the five units per acre. And also the Northeast Davidson Area Plan, which was adopted in two thousand and two. Notice, single-family homes will be the predominant residential use type. The proposed R-five district permits densities up to five units per acre. But as I previously noted, the site is encumbered by those streams and that Duke Transmission Line. The applicant has noted that about thirty-five to forty percent of the site will remain undeveloped. And they anticipate they can develop up to a hundred and two dwelling units, which is a density of about two point three units per acre. Far as mitigating impacts, current traffic counts along West Lexington Avenue exceed five thousand trips per day. Thus, the Transportation Department has noted that a turn lane would be required as part of their subdivision review. And the applicant has offered a condition for right-of-way dedication along the street frontage for accommodate that turn lane. Far as the environmental impacts, the applicant were required to meet all City of High Point environmental regulations. If the development exceeds twenty-four percent built-up on the area, they will have to provide stormwater control measures. And they will also have to meet all stream buffer requirements. Finally, I would note this request does not introduce any new use types in this area. Previous developments had been a combination of mostly single-family, but there also have been some twin home developments in this area. Therefore, staff is recommending approval to rezone this forty-four acre site to a conditional zoning residential single-family five or R-five district. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this request at their November public hearing and recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. The commission included with their approval a statement that the request is consistent with adopted policy guidance. The allowable uses and density of the proposed CZ R-five district are supported by the adopted land use plan and the Northeast Davidson Area Plan. The commission also stated that the request is reasonable in the public interest. As prior zoning approvals allow both single-family and twin home developments along this segment of the West Lexington Avenue corridor at similar densities. There was one comment that was submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I believe that's included in your packet from an adjacent property owner that was just concerned about densities of development in that area. And just note that so you're aware of that, and we included that information in our forwarding memo to you. That is the end of staff's recommendation. I would remind council, when you do take action, you would have to include in your, not only your recommendations, but a statement of consistency and reasonableness. That is a general summary by staff. Are there any questions of staff at this time before the applicant?
Yes, sir. It was Councilman Moore. The, the topography and the stream settings and that thing, I can see it's been unanimous throughout this, but, but that property situation doesn't concern with the change to R-five? I mean, with all that you're going to require from the developer?
Yes, staff has noted that the request is meeting the land use plan far as allowing a maximum density of five units per acre. Based upon those environmental constraints, they, they won't reach that amount. And the request for the R-five district is to allow some flexibility in lot size to work around those constraints and not have to have as much physical impact on the property.
Any other questions for?
Yes. This is Councilmember Hudson. So R-five. In R-five, you can, you can have two joint houses plus a standalone per acre?
They could develop a twin home development.
Right.
Two homes together, but it has to be part of a development of at least five acres. So you could not do a twin home than a single-family home in a twin home. They would have to designate an area of at least five acres for a twin home development.
Has to be twin home, all of the houses in that area.
In that area, yes.
Okay. Is the, the parcel, I assume, north of that, is that part of, is that the same developer, same owner?
When you say parcel north.
That, that area.
Right up here?
No, the one, the one that the word site sits on.
Yeah, all of this area that is shaded is the zoning site in question.
What about the, the city-owned to the left of that?
This property here? This here?
Yes.
That is not part of this zoning application.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Again, we will, this matter will remain open for twenty-four hours for, for any public hearing comments from the public and council.
Applicant may want to make a presentation.
Okay. I didn't know the applicant was with us. Would the, would the applicant like to present anything?
Yes, please. This is Charlie Hall. This is Charlie Hall, Windsor Homes here. Actually have a quick PowerPoint to go through. I'll make it quick since you guys have already seen most of the information. So again, this is Charlie Hall, fifty-six oh three, New Garden Village Drive, Greensboro, North Carolina, two seven four one zero. And good evening, Mayor Wagner and council members. I'm here tonight to represent Windsor Homes. Also with me on the call is David Michaels. He is the head of land development and acquisition at Windsor Homes. And Tom Hall, President of Windsor Homes. And additionally, we have Homer Wade, the engineer with Borum Wade and Associates is also in attendance. Next slide, please. So our request is to rezone approximately forty-four point six-six acres of land located along the south side of West Lexington Avenue from residential, single-family three to a conditional zoning residential, single-family five. This request was reviewed by Planning and Zoning Commission on November the tenth. And the meeting was reconvened on November the twelfth, where the request was voted on by the staff. And they recommended approval on a vote of six to zero. Next slide, please. So attached is the aerial of the site. This zoning map twenty dash twenty-two is consistent with the city's adopted policy guidelines. Because this allows, sorry, because the allowable uses and density of the proposed CZ R-five district are supported by the adopted land use plan in the Northeast Davidson Area Plan. Next slide, please. Furthermore, this request is reasonable and in the public interest because prior zoning approvals have allowed single-family and twin home developments in this segment of the West Lexington Avenue corridor at similar densities, as you can see on this map. Next slide, please. Let's see here. Okay, so this is the site plan that we presented during the public hearing. And as you can see, the main entrance is coming in off of West Lexington Avenue. We are also providing three stub streets throughout the development. We are proposing a hundred and two units, but this could either increase or decrease slightly depending on the final engineer drawings. Next slide, please. So these are some site considerations that we looked at while looking at this development. And I know that Herb already touched on the traffic considerations. Some additional items that we will address during this development process. So with the traffic, we already discussed that. Streams and wetlands, they have been identified and delineated. And our plan is to comply with all stream buffer and environmental requirements. Stormwater management, our intent is to develop, this is a low-density development with less than twenty-four percent built-up on area. As you mentioned earlier, we'll have approximately thirty to forty percent of this site undisturbed. And we are trying to work with numerous constraints regarding streams, wetlands, topography, access, power lines, in order to develop a site that respects all of these factors. Next slide, please. So for our communication efforts, we held the Required Citizen Information Meeting on October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty via Zoom, and we had four property owners in attendance. Next slide. So during this meeting, we showed the concept plan to the four individuals in attendance and discussed layouts with them. Most of the homeowners, homeowners were just curious about the development plan and wanted to know, you know, what we had planned to put on this development as far as, you know, single home, single-family homes, twin homes, density. And if there are going to be any improvements made to West Lexington Avenue. We really didn't have any pushback on here, especially once we told them, you know, how many units we were going to put in the area. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, we feel this is a good fit for this area of High Point. The Planning and Zoning Commission is in support, as shown by their unanimous vote of approval. And we appreciate your time and effort. Sorry, time and consideration, and our team will be happy to answer any questions you all may have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here who would have any questions for the applicant? Okay. Hearing none, then, as I said before, this item will remain open for a period of four hours. And council may take action upon it on Wednesday, December ninth at five thirty. The next item is a text amendment twenty dash zero three. And it's like Andy Piper's coming forward now.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members, Andy Piper, Senior Planner with the City of High Point Planning and Development Department, presenting text amendment case twenty dash zero three, which amends various sections of the city's development ordinance to address recent revision, revisions to the state's watershed rules. Just to give a little bit of background, state agencies are directed to review and update their existing rules at least every ten years. This prompted the state's Division of Water Resources to make several changes to the rules related to watershed protection that became effective this past summer. As a result, High Point must amend its development ordinance to address those changes. Because a number of chapters of the ordinance are affected, the text amendment is broken into multiple sections. I'm just going to go over them real briefly. Section one removes watershed variances as a separate procedure in the table summarizing review authorities. Because the state rules now require watershed variances, like other types of variances, to be subject to a quasi-judicial procedure. So they will instead become a distinct type of variance decided by the Board of Adjustment. Similarly, in section two, it removes minor watershed variances as an application decided by the city's Technical Review Committee, although they will still review them and make a recommendation. It also adds implementation and enforcement of surface water buffer protection to the powers and duties of the Engineering Services Director, as well as making a number of corrections to terminology. Section three includes a variety of procedural changes to the process for reviewing deciding watershed variances, again, primarily related to removing the existing section on watershed variances entirely, and instead including them with the other types of variances. And this section also incorporates language used in the state's rules. Section four is actually the bulk of the text amendment and contains a number of changes to update procedures and the terminology and references in the watershed protection standards in the ordinance, and makes other minor corrections to fix existing errors and to address other issues identified by staff. Section five is actually the only section not spurred by changes to the state watershed rules, but is a useful provision that was found in the prior development ordinance that allows a reduced minimum rear setback where single-family dwellings abut a dedicated public common area. And section six is related to the previously mentioned change to the responsibilities of the Engineering Services Director. And this stems from the state rules requiring the person in that role be certified to make onsite water, surface water determination, something they're already trained to do. However, I'll note watershed protection will continue to be a team effort of all relevant staff as it is now. And then finally, section seven, eight, and nine add, and in some cases remove, rules of measurement, abbreviations, definitions, including some from the previous version of the ordinance that were inadvertently left out and are being reinserted. In summary, this is a text amendment that's necessary to implement changes made to the state's watershed rules. They're designed to be no more restrictive than what is currently in place and are intended to clarify the text, add flexibility, and ensure consistency between various watersheds in the state. Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the text amendment case twenty dash zero three at their November meeting and recommended approval in accordance with staff's recommendation by a vote of six to zero. And this recommendation was based on the proposed amendments supporting goals and objectives in the land use plan to ensure development respects the natural environment and protects and preserves environmentally sensitive locations, including watershed critical areas. And that they're also in the public interest because they will help protect the environment and the city's water supply. So I'll take any questions if you have any at this time.
Thank you. And this item will remain open for a required twenty-four hour waiting period to receive additional public comment. Council may take action on this at their Wednesday, December ninth, five thirty meeting. Next on the agenda is text amendment twenty dash zero four.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Chris Andrews with the Planning and Development Department. Before you, before you tonight for your consideration are the proposed amendments for the city's wireless telecommunications standards. These are the amendments that were introduced before you by staff in an earlier work session, I believe, in October. These amendments are primarily in response to changes in state legislation and in federal communications commission rules that are related to wireless telecommunications, to which local governments must adhere. So these amendments are generally necessary, not discretionary. And the amendments also changed some of the regulations within the city's development ordinance to give, to give clarity and predictability to the wireless telecommunications permitting process and to improve the wireless facility standards as allowed by law. Tonight, we are joined by Susan Raybold, who is with CitiScape. The city has contracted with CitiScape to review our current wireless telecommunications standards and to recommend changes to allow us to be compliant with current legislation. Susan will speak more about the work that she and CitiScape do related to wireless telecommunications. She'll also present the proposed substantive changes. And at the conclusion of her time, I'll follow with staff's recommendation and answer any questions in that time. And there were public comments that were received, and Susan is prepared to address those for you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Susan Raybold. I'm with CitiScape Consultants. I reside in Greensboro. And thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Just briefly to let you know, CitiScape Consultants only consults to local governments. We don't own towers. We don't build towers. We don't provide a wireless service. We've been working in the niche market of just consulting to local government on public policies related to wireless communications for over twenty years. So I wanted to first start out with some pictures and definitions that I'm going to be using as I walk through the proposed text amendments. Before you are three types of macro cell towers. These are the larger power density types of antenna that have to be mounted on more substantial-sized infrastructure, typically towers and rooftops. There are three examples of local macro towers from High Point in this slide. The one, the picture on the right is a non-concealed tower that's located here downtown. Then you have in the middle a concealed unipole where the antenna that you see mounted on the tower to the right are flush-mounted and then covered with a fiberglass casing so that you don't see the coax cable or those antenna. And then the. And then the picture on the left is the monopine in Piedmont Center where the antenna are somewhat covered by the faux branches. We still consider that concealed, but those are the macros, examples of macro towers. The new definition that has been introduced through the FCC recently is a base station, and that is when these macro antenna attach to a structure that is not principally built for the antenna. So anything that the antenna mount onto that is not a tower is now considered a base station. So a base station can be, for example, the water tank that you have here in High Point where the antenna are mounted, or the rooftop like this picture in downtown. Recently, you have seen the deployment of small wireless facilities. The small wireless facilities have typically been going in the rights of ways. These are examples of non-concealed small wireless facilities along East Chester. In this instance, you can see that the antenna at the top sort of looks like a tin can. You can see all of the wire that go from that antenna down that utility pole and then tie into the electronic equipment station here mounted also on that pole. The small wireless facilities per the North Carolina state legislation that goes into effect July 1, or January 1, limit the size of that antenna to be six cubic feet in area and that that ancillary equipment that attaches onto that pole or related to that antenna cannot exceed more than 28 cubic feet in volume. The reason they did this is they don't want those macro cell antenna mounting in the rights of ways. They're specifically geared towards small wireless infrastructure. You also have examples of concealed small wireless infrastructure in your downtown area and along Piedmont Parkway. Conversely, to the slide that I just showed you, these, the antenna in these slides is concealed in that shroud. The equipment on the tower to, or the, well, they are considered towers. On the left and middle slide, the equipment is covered with that shroud, and then on the far right, it's internal to that pole, so you don't have the same visual appearance. Wanted to make sure that you saw what this looks like, so as we walk through the development standards that are proposed, you can associate what that looks like. So the conditions and trends going forward is that we have not stopped deploying wireless. By we, I mean collectively, the government and the industry. The smartphones, the advent of the smartphones, the need for more densification and high-speed broadband to make your handsets work with the Internet of Things that communicate with drive yourself cars and the ability for EMS to communicate in the ambulance with the hospital and the people on the ground in states of times of emergency require lots of bandwidth. And so you're going to see more macro towers. You're going to see a lot more small wireless facilities. You're going to see the transition to 5G, which you started to hear about. At the same time, you also see regulatory standards being removed by the federal and state governments. And so the objective of these revisions is to maximize what you can regulate while still meeting the guidelines of the state and federal standards that they have put in place up to date. So the way the infrastructure works is that your macro cells, those large antenna, broadcast the signal. They do accommodate some capacity, but it's the small wireless facilities that really handle the data. So where you have high traffic areas, where you have large areas of subscribers, where you have higher density population for rather residential or, for example, during the furniture market, you're going to see the need for more small wireless facilities in those areas. So the substant, substantial changes to the proposed ordinance start with the definitions. There's been a lot of changes in the definitions that are consistent with the state statutes, and there's no longer going to be a SUP process for telecommunication major and minor facilities that are being proposed. Colocations on existing towers and base stations are promoted over new tower facilities, and concealed facilities are promoted over non-concealed. The small wireless facilities are proposed to be allowed in all rights of ways and all zoning districts, subject to design standards and height limitations. Macro cells are also allowed in all zoning districts, subject to design standards and height limits, and undergrounding standards are in place for small wireless facilities to the maximum extent possible under the new state regulations. So let's start with the proposed small wireless facilities. First of all, to go into the rights of way, they'll have to have a city master small wireless facility license agreement in place. They're going, you're going to promote, the ordinance rather proposes to co-locate on existing utility poles, and when they do, not to go more than 10 feet above that existing structure. New concealed facilities are only going to be allowed in designated local street rights of ways, gateway corridors, local historic district overlays, and where there is existing or proposed undergrounding of those utilities, that will also be required of these new wireless facilities. When placed in city right of way outside of designated local areas, those can be non-concealed. And when they do have to go in the local streets, the goal is to have them go at the lot line, shared lot lines, so that the infrastructure is not in front of somebody's dwelling unit or right at someone's walkway up to their residential structure. So this summarizes basically what I just said about where the concealed and the non-concealed are going to be allowed. And then with regards to heights, in the, inside the street rights of ways, you have one set of height standards. Outside of the street rights of ways, you have a different one. So inside the rights of ways, in single-family areas on the local streets, the maximum height is 40 feet. Outside of those areas, it's 50 feet. If you are in, if they're proposing to locate in a residential area, a gateway corridor, historic overlay, neighborhood conservation overlay district, and they're not going to be in the rights of way, then that utility pole maximum height first has to be concealed, and the maximum height would be 25 feet. And on lots with single-family attached or detached dwelling units, family care home districts, that's also limited to 25 feet. Outside of those designated areas, the maximum height is 50 feet. And that's the standard. That's part of the definition of a small wireless facility. If you go above 50 feet, they exceed that definition, and so they're not treated as a small wireless facility anymore. For the proposed macro cells, the larger facilities, the concealed base stations can be attached to multifamily dwelling, dwelling units outside of the RM5 district and any non-residential building in any other zoning district. Concealed towers are going to be, are proposed to be allowed in any zoning district. Concealed towers only, though, are only permitted in residential and business special plan development districts and any gateway corridor, local historic, neighborhood conservation overlay districts. Monopoles would not be allowed in those areas, but they would be allowed if approved as proposed in the general business, the RC, EC, and I districts. And then the lattice and guide towers would only be permitted in the LI, HI, AGR, and PNR districts. And then concealed facilities and monopoles would, those types only would be allowed on city property and within the electrical transmission rights of way. So you wouldn't see any lattice or guide towers in those areas. Now, the proposed heights for the macro cells, if it's a base station going on top of a building or the water tank, it would be limited up to 20 foot, could not be taller than 20 feet above that roof line or that structure height. For the concealed facilities in the residential districts, the gateway corridors in your, in your historic and overlay districts, the maximum height would be 100 feet or less. 150 feet maximum in the planned development districts, the GB, RC, EC, and I, and then under 200 in the remaining zoning districts. The reason for that is 200 triggers lighting, and the goal is to not have any more lit towers unless it's required by the FAA. So that's the cap at the 199.99. Others proposed standards that are addressed in the ordinance, proposed ordinance is that the structural integrity meet the industry standards for towers in the area pertaining to wind and ice, which is specific to this geographic area. That each facility be designed for colocations. The 80 to 100-foot towers would require a minimum of two service providers. 100 to 153 and greater than 150, the tower would have to be designed for four. Setbacks would be equal to the fall zone or 110% of the distance from the top of the structure to a breakpoint. That's where a tower is built with a crimp, and if it breaks, if it falls, if it's going to have structural damage, it's going to bend at that point. So from that point up to the top, you'd have 100%, 110% plus the minimum setback of that zoning district. Landscape signage, lighting is all addressed, as is compliance with RF emissions. There were two comments received by AT&amp;T, which I'd like to address at this time. So in the ordinance, let me just a moment to get to my notes, please. The ordinance on page 12, there is a listing for exempt activities, items that wouldn't, that would be exempt. And item 4 indicates that replacement of small wireless facilities with small wireless facilities that are the same size or smaller are exempt. And we believe that AT&amp;T was asking, would that also apply to macro cells? And we are saying no, it would only apply to the small wireless facilities. Now, when there is a, there's a definition for a substantial change, and if a provider comes in for a co-location and they do not exceed the definition of a substantial change, then they are able to get that approved administratively and very quickly. And I think AT&amp;T was wanting to make sure that for a macro cell, they could do that. And they gave a reference to the new proposed state legislation that speaks to that. It says in that particular reference that's commented in here, section 160D-934A for the record, that nothing in this part requires an application for approval for routine maintenance. In other words, a local government doesn't have to require it, but the last sentence in that statement is a local government may require an application for colocations or an eligible facility request, and we think that you should do that because we think it's important that you make sure that they don't exceed that definition when they come in, because it's quite easy to say, oh, we're just going to do a quick modification, and then before you know it, it snowballs into something else. So we just think it's safer that you go ahead and keep that in the application process. The other was with regard to radio frequency emission compliance. Originally, we had in the ordinance, in one of the drafts, that the applicant would provide a statement that they were complying with radio frequency emissions. The Planning and Zoning Board wanted to have that language strengthened, and so it was, the new language states a signed statement from a North Carolina licensed professional engineer shall be provided, and AT&amp;T is requesting that you consider going back to having a signed statement, not by the PE. Cidyscape, in being consistent with the intent that was voiced at the Planning and Zoning Board, feels that if you want to have more strength in that, you should require it by a PE, because then there is more work that is proven to go into the analysis, and the concern was that citizenry wants to be assured that the health and safety is being maintained through the emissions. You can't control the emissions, you can't regulate the emissions, but you can require that they demonstrate that they are compliant, and that's what that does to the greatest possible opportunity. So those are the two comments that were received by AT&amp;T, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Anyone have any questions?
I got a couple, and this is, and I know this is just in reference to like the changes in our development ordinance, but does anybody have any idea of like what the timetable on 5G in the city, like should we expect like a flood of requests for towers and so forth across the city to your knowledge?
I think what you're going to see is a lot of requests for small wireless facilities and some, and more macro cells because they're trying to do what we call 5G enabled. The 5G is not ready to deploy yet. It's being tested, but it's, I know there's a lot of advertisement, but I promise you that it's not real 5G. It's, but you've got to have the infrastructure there so that when they go to migrate from 4G LTE to 5G, that infrastructure is there and that they can go in and make the changes that they need to, to that, to facilitate 5G deployment more quickly. I do think you're going to see a lot of that infrastructure so that they can densify and provide better capacity to the area that they're trying to serve now, but 5G will come later, and then they'll just make changes to that equipment that they put up now to make it 5G.
I'll figure that much. The other one's just an idea, any possibility that we can install telemarketing blocking software in the macro towers? If we can do that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Chris, you have anything, parting, parting words for us?
Yes, sir. Just to further summarize, you know, this was a process where we posted the ordinance online, sent it to the development community, as we heard AT&amp;T as well, and of course was reviewed by our TRC and other city departments. So in considering that, you know, as with other items, consistency and reasonable, reasonableness statement will be required. The request is consistent in that the proposed amendments are generally technical in nature and, and, but in part, they support the land use plan's goal to enhance the aesthetic appearance of High Point, and furthermore, the request is reasonable as the amendments are necessary, changes that are due to state legislation, FCC telecommunications rules. At their November 10th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request by a vote of 6 to 0, and staff also recommends approval of these amendments to the city's wireless telecommunications standards.
Thank you very much. This item will remain open for a period of 24 hours for additional public comment, and council may take action on it at our Wednesday 5:30 meeting. That is it for the planning items. There are several items that we need to take care of towards the end, and then we're going to need to, to spin the rules to add three additional items. So, but we'll go ahead and handle the 2020 493 Resolution of Intent, and I think our Assistant City Attorney may want to give us a little background on that.
Actually, Mayor, here's Attorney Joanne Carlisle here to. So back in May of 2018, when the charter was amended to switch from and implement the four-year terms instead of two, there were a couple of areas within the charter that... that the numeral two was not changed to four. So tonight, I'm coming before you guys to ask you to adopt a Resolution of Intent to make those clerical changes from the numeral two to the numeral four in two different sections. Also, I would ask that you set a public hearing for January the 4th on this matter. And then between now and then, no less than 10 days from January the 4th, legal will publish one time at least a notification of that public hearing. And then on the 4th of January, you basically will come back for the public hearing and receive the marked-up copy and be able to vote on it at that time. I would lastly just like to reiterate, I think when it's, this has been going on, and we've been planning to make this change for at least a year, I believe, that I just wanted to point out that, you know, at no time was there any chance, the city was never in any jeopardy of any legal challenge on this. It was very clear from the beginning of what the intent was, of course. And there was a public hearing held at that time as well.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for the City Attorney? Okay, hearing none. I will go ahead and make a motion then for approval of this item. Is there a second, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem? Is there any other discussion? Just fixing a couple of typos, or non-typos, whatever you wanna call them. Councilman Holmes, how do you vote? Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilwoman Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson?
Aye.
The mayor votes aye, so that item is approved by a vote of nine to zero. Next is the reappointment of Elizabeth Koontz to the ABC Board. And I move for that approval of that item. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Moore. Is there any discussion? I'll just say that Beth Koontz has served on the board for a while, and she's done a very good job. And her term, if approved, would expire on November 15th, 2023. And for anybody who hasn't been, the new ABC store up by Aldi off of Old North Main Street opened this week. It's very nice inside, it's very well-lit, and everybody's there, willing to help you. So if you get a chance, go by there and tell them hello. Is there any discussion on this motion? Okay, hearing none. Councilman Holmes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson?
Aye.
And mayor votes aye, so that item is approved by a vote of nine to zero. Monica, I think this is your Ward III appointee to the Human Relations Commission. Would you like to speak to it?
Yes, I would just like to welcome Mrs. Ichbaw to, to the Human Relations Committee. I've known her and I've known her husband really well for the last three years, and I feel like they'll bring a lot to the Human Relations Committee and really represent a segment, a segment of Ward III. They're part of the Pakistani community, and there's a, I just think it's a wonderful addition to our human relations to add diversity. So welcome, Mrs. Ichbaw.
Okay, is, is that a motion for approval?
A motion for approval.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Holmes. Is there any discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none. Councilman Holmes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson?
Aye.
The mayor votes aye, so that item is approved by a vote of nine to zero. Before we move to the minutes and before we recess the meeting till Wednesday, I'll need a motion, actually, I will make the motion to suspend the rules to add three items. One is regarding property purchase in the Catalyst Plan area. There's also a budget amendment, and also a proposal regarding election of the Mayor Pro Tem for the next year. So I make that motion to suspend the rules to add those three items. Is there a second? Seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem, Chris Williams. Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Councilman Holmes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilwoman Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones? And Councilman Jefferson?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye, so that motion is approved by a vote of nine to zero. The first item, Councilman Holmes and Councilwoman Peters, you guys were sent an email with these two first items attached. The first item is regarding the purchase of property in furtherance of the Catalyst Plan. This is the property located at 315 North Elm Street. So this is actually authorizing the purchase of the property, is that correct? First, and if you remind me, we had an earlier discussion, but.
Greg Ferguson, Assistant City Manager, Community Services. This is authorizing the purchase of the property at 315 North Elm Street on or before December 15th from Elliott Sidewalk Communities, who will be the owner of the property at that point in time.
Okay. All right. Just, just for the public's notice, the purchase price of that parcel is $2.3 million plus the apportion closing costs. And so I will make a motion for approval of this item. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Hudson. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Councilman Holmes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson? And the mayor votes aye, so that item is approved by a vote of nine to zero. Next is the, is a budget amendment to recognize funds received from the sale of property per the land disposition agreement with Elliott Sidewalk Communities and to appropriate funds for the purchase of the property that we just approved the purchase of. This is, this, the budget impact of this is a recognition of $1,380,385 in revenue from Elliott Sidewalk Communities and the appropriation of those funds for the purchase of the property at 315 North Elm. That appropriation will be added to the current balance of $1,300,928 available for land purchases for a total balance available of $2,681,313. And I move for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Moore. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none. Councilman Holmes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson? And the mayor votes aye, so that item is approved by a vote of nine to zero. Next is regarding the selection of the Mayor Pro Tem for the upcoming year. The current Mayor Pro Tem, of course, is Chris Williams, and this time last year, he was actually elected for a two-year term. But the consensus on council, it's not that Chris has done a bad job by any means, but the consensus on council is that we would like to continue with the past practice of having our Mayor Pro Tem only serve for one year at a time and gives more folks on council the opportunity to serve in that position. And so I wanna start by thanking Chris for being willing to serve. I think this is, this is your second trip through being Mayor Pro Tem. And he has really helped me during the past year. And I know he's done a great job helping the new council members to get acclimated and adjusted. So I wanna thank him for being willing to serve in that position during the past year. And I think we owe him a round of applause. And I'll turn this over to him then for, I believe, a nomination.
I'd like to thank everybody, and thank the mayor and thank the members of the body for giving me the privilege to be able to serve in that capacity. I think, I thought it was, I agree with everybody else that it's only fair. I believe that people get the opportunity to sit in the seat and have the opportunity to second the mayor on decisions across the city. So with that said, because of this person's past history and experience, and I think, and as we are still working through transitional period, you know, changing in personnel, God, I had COVID, all this, all these issues, I think I would like to nominate Britt Moore to be the next Mayor Pro Tem of the city of High Point.
Second.
Okay, there's a nomination for Britt Moore to be the next Mayor Pro Tem. I believe it was seconded by Councilman Wesley Hudson. Is there any discussion on that item? Okay, if not, I will call the roll. Councilman Holmes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson? Council, I'm sorry, Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Council, Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Are you sure?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
And I already called Councilman Jefferson out of order, so, and he said aye. So mayor votes aye. And the Mayor Pro Tem is, for the next year, will be Councilman Britt Moore. Congratulations, I guess. Thank you, Mayor. I would like to just thank my colleagues for your confidence. They are big, big shoes to fill, Chris. Chris is quite a leader. But I look forward to working with the staff and this council to hopefully make decisions that are beneficial for short-term benefit and long-term dividends for all of our citizens. So thank you for your confidence. We have some minutes to be approved, is there a motion?
There's a move.
A motion by Councilman Williams, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Jefferson. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Okay. Councilman Holmes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson? Did that again, didn't I? Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
I thought there has to be any particular order. Mayor Pro Tem Moore?
Aye.
Councilman Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
The mayor votes aye. So those minutes are approved. Is there anything else to come for council?
Mr. Mayor, if I could have a minute or so. I'm very big on teamwork, and I believe it's a hallmark of a strong unit when things are able to be pulled together. Recently, we had a town hall to address the flooding in the Foxwood Meadows development. It was quickly pulled together by city staff, city manager McCaslin, Jaron House and his team. We quickly came together, and members of the city staff was there to answer questions. Even our legal counsel, we forwarded questions to them, and they got back in a very timely manner. And then after that, we asked that, I asked that the minutes and the recording of the link be sent out to all the citizens who attended the town hall meeting virtually. And that was done in a very short and very expeditious manner. So I just wanted to thank city management for pulling this together. I think Jaron, Ryan, Sarah, for getting this together very quickly, and it was a very superlative effort. So just wanted to give kudos for great teamwork. And I think hopefully this shows the city and our constituents the level of commitment that we have to, to serve in them and the, and the public in general.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. One last thing before, we're actually gonna recess this meeting, we're not gonna adjourn. But I would like to acknowledge, this is December 7th. Seventy, 79 years ago, our country was attacked, and we entered World War II. My father served, I know many of your fathers or grandfathers or grandmothers or mothers served. So I'd like to, to recognize that and, and all those who, who served in that conflict to protect our, our country. So with that.
Mr. Mayor, I just, I feel like I'd be remiss to not shout out our High Point Police Department for this past Saturday, what a great effort they did in bringing cheer to our city.
Yep. Awesome.
I thought it was very creative. And personally, my boys enjoyed all of the candy and candy canes as a result of the Santa Claus sled and sleigh that they took to all the parks in our city. It was cold, and so it felt like time on the North Pole for a certain. But it was good, and just a big shout out to interim police chief Shroud and his team. They've really made some efforts towards bolstering and really being committed to that community engagement, community relations, much like the tenured chief before him. And so just shout out to them for continuing in that vein and continuing to make that an emphasis of those who serve, so.
Yeah, I, I got to see the Santa parade as they passed by the library. I just happened to be passing by and got to halt my horn and wave out the window at Santa. So that, that is a great thing, and you're right, very creative, very creative. And it's, you know, when you're faced with issues like we have this year, sometimes it spurs creativity.
It does.
So that, that was a very creative thing and a really, really good thing since we didn't get to have a parade this year, so.
And Mayor, if I could, Mayor, if I could say one more thing?
All right.
Is it me, Monica Peters, Councilwoman Peters? I just wanted to say that I did virtually attend the commissioner's inauguration today, and I just wanted to congratulate re-elected Register of Deeds Jeff Bigpen and the newly appointed Carly Cook and, and also newly appointed Commissioner James Upchurch. And then also Commissioner Melvin Skip Olsen was reelected and now is the chair. And then Carvina is, Commissioner Carvina Foster is the vice chair. So I just wanna congratulate them. And we are one Guilford County, and I look forward to really working with our city council and with our county commissioners to make our city the best ever.
Excellent. Thank you. Anyone else like to be recognized prior to recess? Okay. Hearing none, the council will now stand in recess until 5:30 on Wednesday, December 9.